Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Eyre here.
Thank you.
Mr. Bartlett.
Here.
Mrs. Brownite.
Here.
Dr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Van Stone.
Here.
Mr. York.
Here.
All right. Can we, can we, can we?
It's me.
All right, we have. We have three sets of minutes this time. We have the twenty eighth and the two special meetings, one on the twenty fifth and the other one on August the fourth. Any question regarding any of these minutes? I knew you would.
Well, I think for the meeting on the twenty eighth, second page, middle way through, I think the report that didn't have the signatures was the, it wasn't a public works.
Got it. I got it. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're good?
Yep.
So we're, a motion is second then to approve all three minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Did I have a second?
Yeah.
Bob.
And Mr. Eyre.
All right.
Mr. Bartlett.
Well, I wasn't there for the last one. Can I just say aye anyway for the other two? First two, I was there.
I say aye, aye, aye.
Can I say aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
I am the Frito Bandito.
Aye, aye abstain.
Brownite.
Abstain. Aye abstain.
Okay, all right. Did you get that?
Which one were you not at? Do you remember, okay?
I was at, you were saying the first one.
Okay.
Uh, Dr. Lewis.
Well, I wasn't here for the twenty eighth. Well, I mean, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
And I, I don't think I was here for the twenty fifth and I was here for the fourth, so.
Okay.
No, no, yes.
Okay.
Abstain, abstain.
Van Stone.
Aye, aye, aye. Aye, aye, aye.
All right, aye, aye.
I'll figure it out.
Okay, communications, we have Chief Hines' very well put together monthly report. Chief, do you have any remarks, comments? Do we have any questions regarding the report?
I don't have anything at this time.
I see where you did get a very nice letter of those sort of thanking you for recovering someone's stolen vehicle.
Yeah, that was some, uh, that was some good work by a couple of our officers there. I believe Officer Poole and Officer Kurtz.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Dasty.
Dasty was on the job?
Dasty was on the job too, I guess.
Okay.
We will leave Dasty out.
Okay, and while we're talking about Dasty, give us a quick update then about the two K nine cars.
Okay.
And what we're doing then with the remaining car or what you would like to do with the remaining car?
Yeah, we initially, I think I spoke with you and thought that once we got the, the black car back from getting the graphics put on it and once we got the equipment put in it, the pop lock and the fan.
Yes.
That we would liquidate the white one.
Yes.
Lieutenant Pitsley came into my office last week and I spoke with you after that and said, you know, chief, when we replace the K nine car, it's going to be ninety thousand plus dollars because of all the equipment that has to be replaced in it. He said, you know, if we think about it, you know, Dasty, I think Dasty's five years old now.
Right.
Usually a police dog retires after about seven or eight years. So he said, we might be smart to hang on to both of those cars to let through to get to that time. And then in twenty seven, the plan is to replace the K nine unit with a new vehicle. But it would be about time for Dasty to retire. So at that time, there had to be a decision made whether we want to replace the dog or not.
Yeah.
So, and if we don't replace the dog and we say, okay, it's time for another agency on the east side here to take their turn with a K nine unit instead of us, we've done ours, then we don't have to spend that money for that. So I think he's right. I think that, you know, we could save a lot of money possibly by hanging on to both of those cars to let us through to the time where there's a decision made whether we replace Dasty with another K nine unit or whether we let somebody else do it.
Okay, so Rob, do you know then in terms of the insurance, then if we keep the car, what?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know. So, so, because both, both K nine cars are two thousand seventeen, is what the?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. One has well over a hundred thousand on it and the other one has about eighty, I think.
And the, one that we took from Amberly is the one with less mileage?
That's correct. That's correct.
If I may interject.
Now, the mileage will and that's what Lieutenant Pitsley brought up, you know. Officer Kurtz lives an hour from here. So driving every day puts a lot of miles on the vehicle to and from. So, you know, by having those two, we can probably hopefully let, let through where if we get rid of one, and the other problem is if we get rid of one and one with high miles on it goes down, then Dasty has to stay at home and Dasty's not working until that car gets fixed. So I think it, I think it would be smart and probably save us money at this point to hang on to both of them until that time comes where there's a decision made whether we pass the K nine duties on to another agency or whether we decide that we're going to get another dog. At that point in time, then that decision can be made.
What, if the car, if we're going to keep it as a backup car, can the car be used? I mean, is it just going to sit around or can it be used for anything else while we're waiting for the backup to come into play?
No, I mean, if the, if the backup's down.
Well, no, no, I meant, we're, what, the, the main car, we're going to be driving the main car, the new car, and then we got the backup car. The backup car is going to be sitting on the lot, I assume. Can it be used?
The new car, we don't have a.
Well, the new used car.
Oh, the new.
The Amberly Village car.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, well, what we'll do is we'll have, we'll try to kind of, rather than have one set here.
Oh, well.
Because you can't, another officer can't use it.
Well, that's kind of what I'm trying to ask.
Yeah, so we'll kind of rotate it so that they both stay, you know, because you don't want them to sit.
Well, yeah, you don't want.
When the battery goes down.
Exactly, right. Okay, so you would.
We'll kind of rotate them, use them both.
I got you, I got you.
Question, if you don't mind. My understanding is from the Amberly Village K nine car that the area for Dasty is not full within the car and so that he can't really fit in the area that's.
Oh, yeah, he can fit in there. Dasty, Dasty can fit in there.
Okay, I was told that he can't lay down.
Andrew, he had that dog and Creed, Creed was fine. And what, it's a, it's what they call a half cage. There's plenty of room for the dog where the car that, that Matt has now has a full dog cage in the back. But with the half cage, if you have to haul a prisoner, you can't.
Oh.
Where with the full cage, you know, if, if there's two prisoners out there, it needed, needs to be hauled and our two cars are there, we've got to call for another agency to haul our other prisoner, of course.
Sure.
It wouldn't work out good to put the prisoner in the back with Dasty.
I was just under the impression he.
Unless we have a, a split cage like the Amberly car has.
Might not be all bad, but.
You're shaking your head.
Me?
Yeah.
I looked at it. I just, I'm.
Well, Dasty's been in nurse.
He had, okay. I was just given the impression by the officers that he couldn't even turn around and it was so small.
So, any questions then?
No, so I think, Bill, to answer your other question though, when we took out, we took out an extra car and we took the truck down to zero, remember you?
Yeah, yeah.
Those two things combined reduced the premium by about thirteen hundred dollars. So I'm assuming taking one car out could be, what, seven fifty or something like that?
I guess.
Just so you have a ballpark.
Yeah.
Which I think in the long run will, will be a savings for.
Yeah, okay, okay. Any other questions about this? Is this?
No, I had a question about the, uh, chief for, on page seventeen.
Okay.
The.
Page seventeen?
I'm sorry, seven.
Okay.
On the total service demands.
Yeah.
They're up nineteen thousand, almost, or nineteen thousand, almost twenty thousand. Where twenty four, twenty twenty-four is a twelve thousand eighty five.
Yeah, what those are is those are, what counts for that is everything that the officer does, whether it be checking a, a business or stopping to run radar or, you know, basically. So, you know, some of that increase there is just that I have, uh, if you look, probably, let's look at vacation house checks. Obviously, they're, they're down from, from last year. And so things like that, when I'm, you know, I'm asking the officers to, although I went back and looked for whatever reason to this, to this point in time this year, less people have took vacation than they did last year. But I've asked the officers to, you know, I would like when somebody goes on vacation and they fill out a form, I think that both officers that are working, especially the A shift, the seven AM, the seven P, should, both officers should check that vacation house check rather than just one. You know, so. I mean, there's just a lot more stuff that we're counting now because they're, they're doing more things on a, on a twelve hour shift than they obviously did last year.
But there's been a real surprise then to you.
No, oh, no, no.
Okay.
Not at all, yeah. That, that, like I said, those are just anything that they do, whether it be, um, you know, a radio run, obviously, or just something as minor as, you know, checking the identification if somebody looks suspicious. That all counts in that, in that stat there, the total service demand.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, can we have a show of hands then? Are we all in agreement about keeping the backup car?
Sure.
All right, everybody, everybody, we're more or less in agreement.
Can I just ask one question, I mean, just about Dasty in general? I mean, so we've had him for five years, you said?
He's, uh, he's coming up with five years old.
And do you think that the benefits of having him have outweighed the cost?
I do, uh, you know, there's, and luckily, luckily, the cost to, to the taxpayer here is minimal because of the, number one, the grant that we got from the Haverkamp Foundation that bought the dog for us, which was almost ten thousand dollars. And then Cincinnati Police Department, um, training the dog and the handler. When we first got the dog, we went through the K nine academy with Cincinnati Police and that was free to us because Dasty's used by Cincinnati Police quite a bit where it's, because they train together with Cincinnati Police twice a month, every, every other Wednesday. And so if Cincinnati has a dog working that's further away than Dasty is, if Dasty's working, they don't hesitate to call Dasty because Dasty can get there quicker. The only difference is they wear, we wear a different patch on our sleeve than, you know, because it's just, it's trained the same way so, and Matt's trained the same way that the CBD K nine people are. So the benefits that, I mean, Dasty's been a, a great tool for us, but like I said, it's something that, it's going to be a conversation here in a couple of years as to, do we want to continue to do that? The other, the other cost that we don't have that most agencies have is vet costs. Lieutenant Pitsley's wife's uncle is a veterinarian and when we got the dog, he said, look, I'll, I will take care of the dog for you guys and he don't charge us anything. That's huge.
It's big, big, big.
That's a big, that's a big benefit. So, uh, you know, all those things have to come into play, you know, are, are those things going to work out that, that way in two years still? That's something that will have to be looked at. And then like I said, is it somebody else's turn, you know? Years ago Fairfax had a K nine unit, so they had it. This is the first time in the history of Merrimack Police that we, we've had a K nine unit. And I'm proud of that because it's been a, it's been a tool for us, but it's been a tool for a lot of other agencies on the, on the east side. And, uh, but, you know, is it, Harris Park had a K nine unit several years ago, but, you know, is it, is it somebody else's turn? You know? Or New Wigan, that's, that's a question that obviously Lieutenant Pitsley, Chief Pitsley at that time will come to counsel and say, hey, here's what I would like to do or I would like to disband the K nine program. And that's a decision to be made down the road.
Will that grant be available again?
I think so. That's the, the Haverkamp Foundation has provided over, well over million, a million and a half dollars worth of dogs to tri-state, uh, police departments over the last several years. And they, it's their passion to continue to do that.
That's good.
So I think the grant will be available.
Okay.
But then again, the cost to us is the vehicle because we don't have a grant for the vehicle. You know, right now to buy a police car and outfit, it's about seventy thousand. But to outfit the K nine car with all the new stuff, you're probably looking at, like I said, eighty-five to ninety thousand, you know, in another couple of years. So, so I think keeping these, these two vehicles will be a savings for us in the long run.
All right, any other questions? No?
I have a couple, but I'll follow up with you personally, okay?
I'm sorry.
I said I have a couple, but I'll follow up with you one-on-one.
Great, thank you.
We have, um, our chief's, uh, fire report here, Dan Copeland's, looks kind of, kind of like this, this time. Any, any questions? No? Contact Dan directly if you do, I guess. Okay, tax administrator, Arlo's report. Questions regarding this?
Is this anything we need to be concerned about in terms of?
Well, I, I mean, yes, he's showing that July collector, or collections through July, I guess, were down, you know, a hundred thousand as to what they were on, on some projection. But, you know, it's hard to account for anomalies, you know, how it's going to work out at the end of the year, we don't know yet. We could make it up by, or, you know, maybe by September, October, there'll be a trend established and we'll know.
So can he, is he allowed to give us guidance on this? This is not what it's, I mean, I know we can't talk about specifics, but, I mean, we're down three hundred fifty thousand dollars versus last year, so.
Well, he, but he did tell us before that there was, last year was five hundred thousand of one time.
When did that come in?
I think it was spread throughout the year.
Was it spread out?
You don't see it.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Okay, I didn't know.
It was spread.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
So he did, he could, he did tell us that. So we should not, I mean, his message was, don't expect that to happen again. That was a one time. And this is playing out to be that way, so Chuck seemed to be right on that. All right.
Do you have anything to add, Kelly?
Not for tax, no, I sure don't.
All right. All right, Randy made a request to have this priority rankings, the, I guess this was a project of the Committee of the Whole back in twenty-four. Correct?
Yeah, we set our priorities for a year ago and I thought it'd be worthwhile to get an update on where we are and where we're going and if we need to allocate additional resources against some of the projects that are not completed.
Well, you know, as we look through it, um, you know, I, I don't want to over pat us on the back, but I would say that, you know, as you look through this list, I mean, what, what would you say, seventy-five percent, eighty percent?
That's a lot of checkmarks.
Right, so.
As.
Police car's done, monitor's done, new waiting pool done.
Mm-hmm.
Picnic pad done, office remodel done.
Mm-hmm.
Concourse, tuck pointing not done.
Well, it's, it, no, but it started.
Well, but I think he's trying to just check what's are done.
What's, okay.
Uh, did the, did he get the bucket truck? Did that happen?
The attachment?
Skid steerings? You got that, right?
We got that, yes.
Yes.
So that's the LED lights in progress, you know, a month away, two months away, any sense?
I haven't, I talked to Ben and he told me that the guy that was doing, working with Build a Camp was doing the sidewalks by the schools. They want to get that done well in advance at schools, so they don't put them back on that. But he, and I said, as soon as he gets started and you get into your rhythm, let me know when it will be completed.
Well, I know, I, the, all the globes practically, I mean, of course, none of you guys go down to the maintenance facility like I do, but I mean, I think all the globes.
They're all there.
They're all there and, you know, they're waiting and they're running through it. So, um, in fact, I encountered them just the other day out on Mount Vernon doing, you know, doing some of it. It's underway, it's progressing.
Well, I'll tell you, I feel pretty safe walking on the bluff at night considering you could land a plane on it.
The Columbia connect, connector, we deferred that title work?
That's, Chris can give you the update on that there. I don't know that there is an update, but.
Uh, ODOT is working through their consultant for stage three plans. We are working on the land consolidation and subdivision, so we can build the connector on the piece of the library parcel. Rod's going to have a planning commission meeting on that in the next three, four weeks, I think. And then I'll give that to the state and we'll move forward. I think they plan to bid the project in, later this year and then start construction next year.
Really? All right.
Yeah.
That's encouraging.
I'll give you more dates, you know, next time, I just didn't have it looked up, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So you think that whole project can move to twenty twenty-six or is that premature to say at this time?
I'll say it's premature right now. Let me check the dates and I can let you know.
Okay, thanks.
And then on the bathhouse, Matt, you guys decided not to do that, to do flooring in twenty twenty-six, is that accurate?
Yeah, Pool Commission would like to.
Well, the Pool Commission.
Hang on to that permanent improvement at money and spend it next year to put new floor, new flooring in the hole.
When you say new flooring, you mean an epoxy coating on the floor?
Yeah. But it's essentially when you're done.
Yeah.
Places the tile.
Right.
Coats the concrete, looks like a new floor.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The next one, we weren't looking to buy it, we were just setting the money aside.
Yep.
Because it's next year, so we're going to buy either the leaf vac or the back.
Well, you know, um, you know, we, we just bought the skid steer. So the, the loader, we're not, we're not going to be buying a loader here anytime soon. We're going to milk that loader for many more, well, I shouldn't say many, many more years, but maybe four more years. And the leaf, um, the leaf vac, again, we should be setting money aside because we are this year going to have three of them working. There were some repairs that we needed to be done on that third one that we had trouble with, you know, last fall, that weren't able to use. But I, that has assured me that it is going to be working. So we're not buying another one soon, but we should be in, try to be positioning ourselves because when, God forbid, when the time comes, they are expensive. Yeah.
Yeah, so this is setting aside half a year.
Yeah, yeah.
And it could be, that's why we had or, it's just, you know.
Right.
To your point, if there's something else that comes up.
Okay.
Uh, Dale Park sidewalk, we terminated that project. Old Town Municipal Lot.
We're, we're on hold for that because the Thomas Emery Foundation is in negotiations about the chapel. And if it goes to the Waldorf School, one of the candidates, and they are on both sides of that sidewalk, I think we may want to do, or both sides of the parking lot, we may want to do something else about that with them.
There's not any possibility that Waldorf's going to be buying the chapel. I mean, that's not in the works.
I don't think buying there.
Correct.
It might be leasing.
It'd be, be the same kind of lease that the churches have.
Yeah.
No, no different. They're just going to be stewards for the building that's owned by the Emery Memorial.
Okay.
So I just, just a point of clarity, we decided at the beginning of the year to allocate sixty-three thousand dollars out of permanent improvement to do this project.
Right.
In twenty twenty-five. It was on our priority list, so when do we make a decision that we're not going to do it? And how does that happen?
I think it's a hold. I, what I tried to describe was a hold pending if, because if they, if the Waldorf School had both sides of that parking lot, they can pay it ever debt.
It's a municipal parking lot that's used by the residents, used by.
But the part that's really bad is by the chapel.
Used for weddings, used for.
But it's all ours.
It all needs to be, it all needs to be replaced.
I, I think there was, there, there has always been ongoing discussions, you know, with Waldorf as to the extent that they may or may not contribute to this. The amount of money that we allocated, I don't believe would, would do the entire lot. So there's going to have to be some kind of a contribution in there.
I thought.
I don't, I don't. I thought it was.
I don't recall us getting actually a bid to know.
I, I, I think, no, no, we, we did.
Chris first got.
We got an estimate, I believe, or.
Like two years ago, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Two years ago, yeah.
Right. Exactly. So.
I mean, the Waldorf Board's expecting to kick in about two to three thousand dollars for the project.
Chris, what was that bid?
Sixty-three thousand.
Sixty-three, okay.
Because that's what we had built in, right?
That's why we had the number.
Correct.
So, so to Randy's point though, I mean, because this should be on, should be in Public Works Committee, right? I mean, even if it's on hold, Bob, right? If you're still waiting to find out, I, I would hate to have it fall off the list.
I don't think it's going to fall off the list. I mean, it's not going to fall off the list.
But I just think it should be in Public Works, don't you agree? I mean, it would be, and we can put tabled or something like that.
This is kind of a holder.
Yeah.
I don't understand why we don't just do it.
We, we've been talking about this for a long time.
We talked about it for years, it needs doing, it needed doing. I know that it got damaged when the church roof project happened by the heavy equipment there, but the reason it got damaged is it doesn't have any kind of sub base whatsoever. And, uh, it was never built properly and it's a municipal lot, the people who live there use it. We don't pay the attention that we should to the Old Town, the historic district in general, and I think we should do it.
Again, at a minimum, it should be in a committee.
Well, I agree with Rob at this point, let's put it in your committee.
Okay.
And let's, because, you know, other, some additional business and, ain't going to get done for sixty-some thousand bucks, I don't think.
But then let's, let's.
We need to find that out.
Well, or, you know, do you do parts, do you do it in phases?
Well, now, okay, yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe there's a way to do that. And also, Mr. Eyre, I believe you were looking into the addition of adding the lighting back there. Would we do, we want to have that sort of buttoned up.
And we, we think we're as far as we need to go on that right now.
Okay, okay, all right, okay. Well, consider it in your committee.
Chris, could you, could you speak to whether it would be cost efficient to do it in pieces? It doesn't seem like that would be, but I, I'm not a civil engineer.
I, I would have to look a little bit further, but I cannot imagine doing it in pieces would save any money.
Okay, thank you.
Because, yeah, inflation's going to just wipe that out in a year.
It's an all or nothing project. Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
Oh, it is all or nothing, you think?
Yeah, for that parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd want to get a price with, we did two years ago, just get a price with the, with the paving of the streets so that lowers your cost. So I think that's the way to do it. So I don't think doing it half and then waiting years and it wastes any better time or any other money.
If it is less than seventy-eight thousand dollars, we don't need to notice it and do all this.
We could get a quote, if it was under seventy-eight thousand dollars by ORC, we could get a quote and have it done that way.
Seventy-five.
Which speeds things up, we don't have to put it in paper and all that stuff.
All right.
Seventy-five.
It's, I think there's.
It goes up, it goes up every year.
Oh, okay, so seventy-eight next to, okay.
Yeah. All right. Sounds like a plan.
Uh, municipal sidewalk repairs.
I have surveyed all the sidewalks.
Awesome.
I gave a spreadsheet. Mr. Holloway said he would like to go and coordinate that. So I gave him a spreadsheet with all the number of squares that were left cracked tilted by several different height standards. And Rod's been a little bit busy doing things for a lot of people around this table.
So I don't know if it's Matt or Susan that brought up, when we repair the sidewalks, can we get Pruce or someone to come out and offer rate for residents, you know, while they're here? You know, maybe we could waive the, since, since they would already know our specs, can we waive any fees or anything like that?
Well, that's, that's a very good thought because as just a friendly reminder, I was going to offer this up. You know, we are talking about municipal sidewalks. These are sidewalks that are within the municipality that are, you know, owned by the village, so to speak.
Adjacent, basically they're adjacent to parks or municipal facilities.
Facilities, any sidewalk that is in front of a private residence that the homeowner is responsible for the upkeep, maintenance and repair of that sidewalk. Now, to Randy's point, we may be able to, say, partner up with whoever's doing some of our work.
So if a homeowner knows that they have a sidewalk that they wish to have repaired, some kind of a contact should be made to let us know when we get started on our own repairs.
Because when, when this kind of started, we had talked about issues on private residents. The comment was, we better get our house in order first.
First, yes.
Before we do anything like that.
Right, right, yeah, good point, all right.
Okay.
So I'm just not clear, so it's with Rod? Is that, the, what's the next step for the sidewalks?
Well, for example, the first thing is to get an estimate of, for all these sidewalks I surveyed. What would it cost to replace it? Because right now we have, I think it's $5,000 in the permanent improvement. So what is our plan for doing 25, 26, 27, whatever it is, to get that done? Or do we wanna say, oh, we wanna go do it all in one year? And right now, we just need, I need some cost.
Yeah.
And Rod said, hey, I'd like to work with Chris a little bit and some of the contractors he knows around here and get a, and I said, and then, so what I did was, he gave me what the criteria for the sidewalk is. Because there was less than 3/8ths and lower, 3/8ths to 7/8ths. And it's all broken out that way, the number of squares, and it's done by sidewalk, so.
And Chris, help me out here, because not every sidewalk that might have a little bit of an elevation, I guess it has a crack. It could be, you can grind it, correct? I know we've done that in the past.
Yeah.
And there's substantial savings in that.
Yeah, I would think anything more than an inch you would have to replace, but then less than an inch you can shave. But we probably wanna talk to that contractor that's doing it for us, to see if that, if that's right.
Yeah, okay.
Is there any limit in terms of weather to do this work, like we wanted to get it done this year?
Uh, concrete sidewalk, as long as there's not snow on the ground, they could do it and still put blankets around it. So the temperature, you know, you get into February, you probably won't do anything. But, yeah, we could do this all the way up until January 1st.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
So, but, did you grade the sidewalk, like, like how Chris grades the streets, this is bad? Because I know there's some on Chestnut that are really bad.
I'll tell you the one that I think is the worst are on Cleanville. Right adjacent to Dale Park.
Oh, there's one that's really bad.
Yeah, that one's really bad.
I'm just saying, there were, I would say, 60% of the squares there were impacted. Some of the places had a lot of 3/8ths inch tilts. Once again, grinding could resolve a lot of those. But I, I did it by, by street.
Sure.
Or, you know, by area.
Well, the other thing I looked at was, you know, our permanent improvement, what we had put aside back in December. And if, I'm not sure if this body has an appetite for this, but if we're not gonna do something, can we put incremental money towards you getting your project done or whatever that might be?
Well, I mean, can we at least, I mean, I know Rod's busy, but can we at least start some of the work? I mean, it's gotta be incremental work anyway.
I think as long, you know, Rod was very, he said, I really wanna do this.
Okay.
So if you could talk to Rod.
It's very agreeable.
Yeah, well, I mean, Bill said...
No, I didn't, I didn't bet, I twisted his arms on some occasion, this is what I want him to do.
Yeah, yeah. Well...
Bill gives him the directive what to do, so.
I would like, I guess to Susan's point, I think Susan was trying to raise the issue. I mean, it would seem to me, can we at least get started on some of this? Especially some of the ones that are, really need to be looked at, you know.
Because we had to set aside in last year's permanent improvement, because we had, like you said, Bob, we had like 5,000 a year.
Yep, yep, yep.
Just had a placeholder until we had a better definition.
But I think we need an estimate of what the whole bill's gonna be and then how do we, because it's 60,000.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
But maybe we don't, you know, clearly attack the worst ones first.
Yeah.
Oh, I agree, there could be, we're gonna do this, this, exactly. That's why I kept the statistic, or the measurements by street.
Okay.
So we could say, we'll do this one and this one, whatever.
Well, I'll, I'll talk to her, I'll have a conversation with him about it.
If I need to do anything more, I'll do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think we're probably asking them if we're gonna do the trouble areas that's inefficient rather than the street. But what, is that better than say, I'm gonna do all of them instead of saying, I'm gonna do 10?
Actually, many of the sidewalks are not, don't have that many squares in them, you know.
No, but you can cut some of them, I mean, you know, if you have a, just a section, even though it's not segmented into squares, you can still cut it and just replace that little section.
Why don't you replace just that square?
Right, right.
Exactly, that's, that's why I kept the measurement by square.
Yeah.
And the number of squares with this, this, this.
Yeah, all right.
So if I may, the, the street rehab contract has a price for sidewalk replacement at $15 a square foot. So if you've got a square footage, I can work with Rod and we can put a change order together for the street work if you wanna start something. Or, or we can write a new package and bid it out. But if you want something done this year, we could just add it to the street work. So, or no? Okay, I have a price if you wanna look at that.
You can charge it, it's in the permanent improvement fund, it's not the street fund.
Right, so it's not street fund?
Right.
Okay, uh, next one?
So, does that mean that we already basically know the price? Is it $15 a square foot, is, can that, can't you take your spreadsheet, Bob, and do some magic with it?
Well, the question is, how much?
To an estimate?
I'll have to talk to Chris on that. About, about some, there's a lot that had just very small, we could, they're small enough. There are, there was a large number that was under 3/8ths of an inch. So we could grind those. And so it's, it isn't just going out and replacing them all.
Right, I get that. But would it be reasonable to next meeting have a cost, have a cost estimate?
Why don't we put that in the Public Works Committee and we'll take it there and I'll work with...
It's in there.
It's in there, yeah, it should be in.
So we just basically need to get a cost for replacement. I mean, who does the grinding, didn't, wasn't there a guy?
There's a separate guy that does the grinding.
Separate guy, right?
So it's a, it's not our guys, it's a third party?
It's a third party, yeah.
All right.
Next, next on the list?
Connects.
Oh, sorry.
That's a question.
Right, so when can we have a cost estimate put together for it?
I can't tell you right now, as soon as possible.
Okay, well, we can shoot for next meeting?
So we have a, are we gonna schedule that Public Works for the 19th?
I think so.
Tuesday, the 19th, we could add that.
A couple topics in, huh?
We'll do a couple.
Oh, yeah, you could cover, right.
Any more comments? Mary Emery sidewalk repair, we did that. And Button Becker Park planning, the park board will have that on the 28th of this month. So they'll put, they'll put together their recommendations and at some point bring it to us. Boat House repairs, I think, Matt, that we didn't get that grant, it's favorable for that. I think your advice was to wait.
Well, it's the same situation. We have missing stones, it's not causing any leaks now. We're sort of just living on borrowed time, but there's no urgent need to do the work now unless you go with the school of thought that we really should do it now before we have a much more expensive problem when water starts to cause damage when it does leak. So, I mean, I, I think we should put it in next year's budget.
Why?
Why? Because it's, because we're living on borrowed time with all these missing stones.
But you're asking why not this year, then?
Yeah. Well, we would never get it scheduled for this year. It's, we would need to give the contractors a few months' notice because they have to find replacement stones and cut them and stuff and get them scheduled.
And this, this is in your committee already.
So it's already August, so it's not, I mean, so if it takes a few months, you don't think we could get it done before the end of the year?
I could check with the contractor, but the way the historic roofing contractors are, just because I know the project's going on with the chapel and with the Paris Center Building, I don't, I just don't think there's any way we'd get it scheduled that soon.
But as it stands, right at the moment, it's not leaking.
Correct, but, but...
No, I know, I know.
Attempting faith.
I know. But, but tying into that, you know, the next thing down here on the list is the municipal building, have the copper ridge to the roof. Well, you know, I would love to be able, bare minimum, as I talked about last year, to clean the roof. And then, of course, I know that copper ridge is expensive and that keeps down the moss and so on and so forth. But I would like to get a fresh quote when we go into budgeting later in the season here to at least clean the roof and have it fully inspected. I'm talking about the slate now. Again, to be proactive, because there are loose slates on this roof.
But that's maintenance, you don't have to go through permanent improvement for maintenance stuff. You can do that anytime.
Well, all right, if that's what you're telling me, but...
So, but we did, we did put 11,000.
It's gonna be a little expensive.
Yeah, but, but I think that was for the copper part, because you're adding a new feature. Which is if you're just maintaining the current thing.
Well, again, I would, I would like to add the copper, but I mean, with price of copper right now, it may not be the best idea.
It's not gonna go down.
Yes. But cleaning the roof, I don't know if any of you guys, I mean, if you ever look up there, it's, it's in dire need.
Not disagreeing, so, but, so again, you can do that anytime. You don't have to wait for, you don't have to wait for the decision here to clean the roof. Unless you wanna do the copper right afterwards, you know?
Yeah, well, let me get a, let me get a fresh quote.
So I think we had 11,000, for permanent improvement, we had 11,000 for the copper. Is that enough, do you think, for the...
Well, it was enough, it was enough last whenever, when, you know, copper didn't, you know, rocket off to the moon. I'll, I'll try and get a, I'll try and get a fresh number.
So that's, as far as that, right now, you're working on getting an updated quote for the copper ridge?
Yeah, I will.
And the maintenance costs for the cleaning and slate replacements.
Yeah, well, we'll start with an inspection, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's nice how they can do that with drones now.
Yeah.
And then the last two are Old Town Center signage and the lighting. And I think they, we've sent some information on the lighting.
Lighting, and I don't think we've ever really done anything with the signs at the Old Town parking lot. Waldorf has offered to take the ones down, take them in, clean them up, paint them and put them back. And I think that's kind of a nice offer.
So Bill, I guess, is there anything we can do to help with the concourse? So I happened to be at Huber Lumber today with Randy Huber. And they have those. And he said, if you bring this material in here, I can bandsaw it and I can notch it, and he can do all that. And I know we allocated money for this year for that. Does that sound like an option?
Possibly. I've essentially already bought the remaining cedar to finish off the eastern wing, the one that I'm working on. And I've sort of refined my working technique. I sort of have a system now, you know, I'm doing it, you know, two sections at a time, you know, kind of a thing. I fully anticipate that job being done this fall, by the fall. All, all of it?
All of it?
Not, not counting the center. And when we get to the center, maybe we'll have that discussion. Center's gonna be a little more involved.
Okay, so the strips that go on top?
Yes. Well, the strips are gonna, those are gonna go on as well, yes.
Because Randy said that if you don't do that, they'll warp.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, we're, we're okay on that front for now. Well, you know, I have to individually cut those strips. So when I cut them, yes, I do wanna get them up before they go spaghetti pieces on me, yes.
Well, it's not easy, I know.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have to rent a, a little kind of a lift mechanism to, to do, to do the lattice tops on the western side. Because, you know, the backside of that thing is a bit of a drop, yeah.
So that's the plan? Eastern wing done this fall, center section we do next, start next spring? Is that basically it?
Well, I mean, depending on what time in the spring or in the fall I get the other one done, I might start, I might start disassembling part of the center section, yes. But I felt, like I said, I've already bought all the remaining cedar that's required, more or less.
Are you able to get enough time from Ben's guys to, when it's time to put things together?
The way that I'm working it now, I only, really only using them for some of the heavy, although my son helped me this weekend to put the 4x6s in place. You know, I need a little help with that. But the other, the cutting of the crossmembers and fitting all of those, I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm doing those myself. I just find it more efficient that way.
Yeah.
Because we did, I mean, we did put money in the budget for, we need help, we need help.
Yeah, I know, on any given weekend, Rob, you'll probably be willing to help me and I haven't called in yet.
I tried to offer, I tried to offer yesterday morning.
I mean, look, I don't know where you've been over there lately, but I mean, progress is being made.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's...
Excellent progress.
Well, I wouldn't say excellent progress, but progress.
I see it, I mean, I live right across the street from it, I see it. I noticed today when I was pulling out.
Last four mornings.
Yeah. I am, I'm over there early because it's hot.
Bill, to your point at the beginning, when we started talking about this and having gone through this, I think we have had a good year. And there's, and there's a few things that we can talk off by the end of the year.
Yeah, I think some, some patting on the back is in order here.
Especially that parking lot.
Because I will tell you, in my career, companies that had clear priorities are the most successful companies I've ever worked with. So, you know, clear priorities and starting with number one and going down is, you know, that's, that's why we did this exercise. So, thank you all.
So, Bill, you, you mentioned something earlier.
Should, should we start to do the next round of five-year forecast, the capital forecast? You know, we've done that the last two years. Is that something we should get kicked off? Because we wanna do that first and then we have that list, then we prioritize that list. And it seems like we wanna get both those steps completed before the end of this calendar year.
Yeah. Is that something you're...
We can put it in the finance committee, yeah.
Okay, all right, so, so something you wanna start putting together?
Yeah, just using the exact same templates?
No, I know, no, I know what you're talking, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the way we did it, yeah.
Ask people to update it.
It gives us a good, you know, feel for money and what we wanna do and afford and all that kind of stuff. Yeah, all right, sure.
Okay, Johnny, you can put that in the finance committee.
Got it, okay.
So Kelly, I just had a quick question for you. So we had done our permanent improvement meeting. Do you have what we've spent against...
I can get it.
Okay, could you send that out?
Yep, Rob and I have already talked about it.
Yeah. You think it's gonna be high or low?
Well, if, because I, when you look at it...
It can't be high, because you can't go over.
Yeah, true.
So for, for Ann Button Becker Park planning, we had 11.5, and that's only gonna be $6,200, so. And I can tell you, we're not, we're not spending any of our money to do any park benches in 20, we probably won't in 2026 either. So do we, moving forward, just take that out as a placeholder, because it's not necessary?
Okay. All right, all right. All right, any other questions regarding this? We're gonna move on. Young lady's been sitting here incredibly patient, yes? Permission, you're gonna go up and tell us the books?
I thought they were supposed to go first.
Poor Mandy. Hi, Mandy Bieckroff from the Public Library. I actually, I don't have any significant updates at the moment. We are completely cleared out. Our facilities department has eliminated all the shelving and everything, so it's, it's pretty well gutted at this point. So, just waiting on construction start. Hopefully I'll have an update on that coming up soon, but I know there's some stress around it, so I'm happy to take any complaints that you have at this time.
Well, like I said, I've been going to Madera.
I go to Madisonville, Madisonville's nice.
It is, yeah, it's very nice. So they're estimating we'll be finished sometime in December, which I'm hoping is accurate.
Yeah.
Is it all interior, there's no outside?
Correct, all interior, yep. Yeah, you'll see big signs, but, yeah.
All right, well, good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mandy.
Thanks, Mandy.
All right.
You still come to meetings, though, right?
Oh, yeah.
She said she would last time.
All right, any question regarding the bills?
Well, I brought this up last council meeting.
Oh, the...
Another $3,700 for bank fees in a month?
I'm meeting with our rep and our merch service rep on Wednesday to dive into that.
So, yeah, my God, that would be over $7,000.
Well, I mean, a lot of it, a lot of it is because, you know, we're, we're doing a lot more, it's higher, it's tennis, pool. You know, there's a lot of fees that we pay for using authorized.net, for using Square. So I'm hoping that we can...
These are credit card charges.
Yeah.
This isn't banking...
I think that's just a moniker that she's put on it.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is credit card, that's my bad.
It says credit card charges.
Right.
Versus last time was the fees.
It was fees.
Right, but I'm hoping to get both of those tidbits answered when I meet with this, I'm meeting with her Wednesday.
Because I went on, out of curiosity, because we do charge 3.5%, 3.25%, I believe, for credit card fees for tennis and pool and all of that.
Yeah, yeah.
We do the same for...
Well, and I guess the analysis would be, are we getting, are we recovering, are we recouping all of it? So anyhow, I'm, I'm getting that on Wednesday.
Okay, well, motion and a second to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite?
Aye.
Dr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone?
Aye.
Mr. York?
Aye.
All right, pay the bills. All right, Rob, I think you're up there, bud.
Yep. Okay, two reports here. First one's on risk management insurance. The finance committee met on Tuesday, July 29th, 2025, at 4:00 PM to discuss renewing the village's risk management insurance. Present at the meeting were finance committee members Rob Bartlett and Bob Van Stone, Mayor Bill Brown, Senior Administrative Assistant Joni Van Pelt, Fiscal Officer Kelly Rankin, and Carrie Nova Soul from Ohio Plan. The finance committee reviewed the proposal for risk management coverage from Highland for 2025. The cost of our insurance in 2024 was forty-three thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. The proposed cost for 2025 is forty-seven thousand, three hundred and eight dollars, an increase of four thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars, or nine point seven percent. The overall base rate increase is four percent. However, the cost of replacing our property and equipment has increased by eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and three dollars in total, which is the reason for the jump all the way to nine point seven percent. Ms. Nova Soul shared that there might be an opportunity to reduce the cost of the cyber coverage while also improving the coverage. However, that will take some time to pull together, and the 2025 coverage has to go into effect on August 26th, 2025. Ms. Nova Soul will gather information on this possibility and present it to the finance committee at a later date. If it does result in a lower cost and/or better coverage, the finance committee will come back to council with a proposal, and the premium can then be prorated for the rest of the year. There was also some question as to the dollar amounts of the, for, of the coverage for the furniture and fixtures in the municipal building, currently two hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars. Ms. Nova Soul said, we could get an outside appraisal, and if it resulted in a lower value, we could implement that in 2026. She provided the name of two firms, Seabiz and Kroll, who have an agreement with Ohio Plan members that can reduce the cost of an appraisal. The finance committee voted unanimously to recommend that we accept the 2026 premium, insurance premium of forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. Oh, that's a typo, isn't it? It's forty-seven...
Point that out.
Yep, I didn't catch that one at the bottom.
Forty-seven, three oh eight. The finance committee also agreed to work with Ms. Nova Soul on assessing the other option for cyber coverage and get quotes from Seabiz and Kroll on what it would cost to do an appraisal of the furniture and fixtures in the municipal building and determine if it is worth paying for this work. If council agrees with the recommendation on the increase in the new premium, it needs to be passed via an emergency resolution so it can go into effect by August 26th, 2025. Respectfully submitted, Rob Bartlett and Bob Van Stone.
All right, you heard the report. Any questions?
I just have a question. It says, the first sentence of the third paragraph, Ms. Nova Soul shared, there might be an opportunity to reduce the cost of cyber coverage while also improving the overall coverage?
Cyber coverage.
No, it says the cyber coverage while also improving the covered, the cyber coverage.
Cyber coverage.
Okay, that was ambiguous to me, so...
I think you guys did great work, and I move we accept the report.
All right.
Second.
Second. Mr. Air?
Aye.
And Mr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite?
Aye.
And Dr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone?
Aye.
And Mr. York?
Aye.
All right. Rob, sounds like you got one more.
Yep.
So...
The finance committee met on Tuesday, July 29th, 2025, at 4:00 PM to discuss the waste and recycling fee that is charged to residents via Greater Cincinnati Waterworks. Present at the meeting were finance committee members Rob Bartlett and Bob Van Stone, Mayor Bill Brown, Senior Administrative Assistant Joni Van Pelt, and Fiscal Officer Kelly Rankin. Earlier this year, the Public Works Committee recommended and council approved accepting Rumke's one-year extension of the current contract at an increasing cost of four percent. The goal of the finance committee has been for the fee that residents pay for waste and recycling, plus the money we receive from Hamilton County for our recycling efforts, to equal the cost the village is charged by Rumke. As such, the finance committee is recommending we increase the resident's fee by four percent in 2026. This will result in a fee of twenty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents per month for houses and seventeen dollars and ninety-nine cents per month for apartments. The finance committee also recommends the increase go into effect with Greater Cincinnati Waterworks' December billing, so the village will receive the increased revenue in January, the same month that the village's costs will increase with Rumke. If council agrees with the recommendation to increase residents' waste and recycling fee by four percent for 2026, then council will need to pass legislation before the end of October, updating our current ordinance in order for the increase to go into effect in December, 2025. Respectfully submitted, Rob Bartlett, Bob Van Stone.
All right, you heard the report. Any questions?
Good report, Rob.
Susan, you look like you have a question?
No.
I move we accept the report.
All right.
Well done.
Second.
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 Aye. Aye.
Let me at least call your names. Mrs. Brownite?
Aye.
Aye. And Dr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone?
Aye.
Mr. York?
Aye.
All right. And then what were we doing with, uh, Marcy or...
Yeah, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so you guys went ahead on this. I actually had this meeting back in June and prepared my report, which you and Rod decided to hold based on clarification from Ed. So this is just kind of catch-up, and I was gone for a lot of July. So on Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025, Economic Development Planning and Zoning Committee met in order to discuss the creation of a commercial CRA in Marymount's industrial zone. Present at the meeting were committee chairperson Marcy Lewis, vice-chairperson Bob Van Stone, member Susan Brownite, and Mayor Bill Brown. Three parcels are undergoing some significant changes, specifically Pease Doors officially moved into Marymount, Haney Packaging is closed, and Cincinnati Gear has been acquired by the German company Rink. The committee voted unanimously to incorporate the entire industrial zone into the new CRA. Legislation is being prepared, and after the resolution is passed, Mayor Brown will meet with the Tax Incentive Review Council, who will make recommendations to council for the terms and conditions of the CRA.
Okay, well, as we sort of said, we kind of, so we could have the first reading of the resolution, we're gonna have the second reading of the CRA here in a minute. And I believe this is all, I mean, everybody signed this now, correct?
Yes. I did.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's all the reports, I guess, that we have, and miscellaneous village offices.
We need a motion of second to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. Well, didn't we do that last time?
No. We tabled it.
Because there was, no...
We just went ahead with the, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because there was only one, there was only one committee person here.
So has...
We need a motion of second.
I move we accept the committee report.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite?
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone?
Aye.
And Mr. York?
Aye.
All right.
Can this come...
I have a question, may, this may be a little out of order, but on the legislation, is there any timing that's important for that? Meaning, do we have to put that legislation on an emergency?
You mean for the CRA? I don't believe so. Do we need that? On the CRA resolution, we're just sort of passing it through. We don't really need to do this on emergency. No, um, no, and...
Okay, that's, it was just a question.
Yeah.
Because there are, there are cer- certain ways, oh, we gotta do it right away, gotta do it right...
Right, right, right. Well, it's good to have it in place, and like I said, the Pease Window and Door Company down there, they are, at the moment, engaged in some remodeling work. However, it's, it's not the thing that would basically affect the CRA. I mean, when they get to that work, they will be making an application for an abatement on that work.
And we've discussed that with them.
Yeah, we have.
We talked with them last week, and they, they understand...
They're aware of the timing.
Marcy, does this stay on or does this, may this come off?
It can come off.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, as I started to say, before I was interrupted, village offices will be closed Monday, September the first. I'm sure there's a reason.
Labor Day.
Labor Day. Every day is Labor Day. All right.
Except Monday.
Resolution there, Joni?
Okay, this is the second reading. A resolution implementing Sections 37, 35.65 through 37, 35, 70 of the Ohio Revised Code to expand the boundaries of community reinvestment area in the Village of Marymount.
All right, that's the second re- reading. I mean, like I said, I think we've gone over this, or you understand what it is.
Well, ask some questions.
Sure.
I had a question, too. Go ahead. My, you know, my question, you know, we said expand, but this is a new CRA, isn't it?
Yes.
That's one of the discussions Rod and I had quite a bit about, we set up a CRA over here years and years ago.
Right, but this is a commercial CRA as opposed...
Expanding it to this industrial area now.
Well, I know that there are some commercial properties included in that, like the theater and Spinnin' Webbers. Isn't, isn't that true? Some of the, the commercial properties on the square are included?
Yeah, right.
But I just, you know, that was one of my initial questions when I reviewed this legislation way back when I did. And I thought it was a new CRA and that technically, technically, those businesses shouldn't be included in the residential CRA.
That's exactly correct.
No. Would, would you prefer that the word be create as opposed to expand?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Create a commercial, yeah.
Well, we've already created a commercial industrial area right here across the street. So I think this is just expanding into that, uh, commercial area down there by Fairfax. That's something Rod and I discussed, and I...
Okay.
I, I, I think we're right about that, but if you want me to check with Rod again, I certainly will.
So it's your impression that the properties, like the Spinnin' Weber Theater and...
They are in a CRA, yes.
But are they in a commercial CRA?
They're a commercial CRA.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, okay. Is that your understanding?
Yeah, yeah, the way it was, the way the original was written, it was all encompassing. It was, the residential and the commercial was all encompassing in one document that was originally created, the whole thing. And we've added on to it, like you said, that is like three or four times we've added on to it. You know, we did the steam plant, we did the house next to, the house next to the barn. We've expanded it.
But that was all residential.
No, no, well, again, this was...
Well, this?
Yeah, this, the square is already part of it.
All right, are we all clear?
So is there, um, I, I think it would be great to see, it says here, see attached legal description, and then there's also all properties identified in Exhibit A. Would it be possible to include those so we can see the actual stuff that's referenced here?
Yeah, Rod has it, I...
Okay, so Bill, for the, for the next meeting, can we have?
I'll get it from...
So you want a, you want a listing of all the properties?
No, no, it just, it references it here, right? In the legislation, it says, see attached legal description, and it's not, there's nothing attached. And then it is, and it also references an Exhibit A, and so it's just, you know, we should just, I think...
As soon as it's a map.
To see the whole thing.
Okay.
What Rod was planning on doing, I thought it was gonna be included, this just come outline, we don't have an actual meets and bounds legal description of it all, but it is a map of the area.
Yeah, that would be great. That'd be great. Yeah, just, because again, it references it twice.
I know what you're saying, right, yeah.
It should be on it.
Okay, and just to make, make sure I understand the process, because the report, the report says, once the resolution's passed, Mayor Brown will meet with Tax Incentive Council, who will make recommendations for the terms and conditions. But when I read, when I read the legislation, is each, is, I'm on Section 4, and it's, and it says, the term is what is negotiated, right? The fifty percent is set, and then the term is what is negotiated. But is the term negotiated with each project?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so, so Bill, you're, you're not gonna come forward with the terms and conditions of the CRA, really? Because it's, each, each one will be own negotiation.
Each one will be negotiated, right?
The fifty percent's everybody, everything gets fifty percent, the question is just how long.
No, no, not, I don't think so, Rob.
It's right here, the way this is written.
I thought in an industrial, both, both the percentage and the term you negotiated.
Well, again, the way it's, look at Section 4. Right now it says, it's fifty percent, and then the term shall be negotiated, is what it says.
Yeah, the terms, but I also...
No, no, term, length, length. Term is in length.
Right, because, but I thought the percentages or the, the terms then, you know. I know, I know what it might, I know what it says, it's there, but I'm just saying, it was my understanding, prior to this being written, that basically both the percentages and the time are negotiable.
Okay.
And the, and let me back that up by saying, because if you wished for some reason to go over seventy-five percent abatement, then you had to get, you know, special dispensation from the school board.
Right.
So, but I, I don't know, I mean, maybe we're having...
I, I think this is, the wording here is actually consistent with the original CRA.
With residential CRA.
Again, it's all, it's all in one, it's all in one thing, it all...
I've always read it, that there's two distinct CRAs.
Right, right, but there's one legislation to create it both, you know, create a residential and, and commercial.
Maybe, like I said, with the way that we've done it here...
Let me get back to Marcy's point about expansion versus creation.
Well, then you'd have to go back and redo those then, right, the square? Because that is commercial, clearly. And we gave an abatement.
Is that abatement up?
I don't know.
Yeah, it is, actually this year. It's this year.
That one's up.
The members of Spinnin' Weber.
So I just, to your point, I mean, if you want to have the, the amount be, you want to change this wording in the legislation then.
Right.
Because this says it's a hard fifty percent for everybody, no matter what.
It does, you're right, yeah.
And then it's just the term, the length, the length of the abatement is all...
Do we want it to say up to fifty percent, or do we want to leave it the way it is?
Well, I mean...
I like that, I like that.
Yeah, obviously, I mean, you know...
Dave, if you don't do it, at least fifty percent.
Having, having done these for a rural enterprise in a previous resident, certain companies, we were that, we wanted to keep it fifty percent below, and they said, we have an extreme cash flow situation. So what we did is we upped it above fifty, but we restricted the term, so we gave less abatement, but the company was happier because it solved their cash flow problem, which is true for a lot of startups. So you don't want to be stuck with, you can't go above fifty.
Do you want us to say terms and condition?
Well, I think...
I mean, I, I am understanding the term to mean both.
Susan, do you have to leave?
I just took care of it. I'm good, thank you.
Sorry, but I think you, you had a good point earlier, Bill, about, I don't think we want to go, if you gotta go above seventy-five, now all of a sudden it's a whole different ballgame.
It's a whole different ballgame, yeah.
And so I think, if, if we put a cap, we're saying not to exceed, is it at seventy-five, or is it, if it's below, do we use the word below seventy-five?
Well, it was, it was my understanding from reading a bunch of other documents regarding, you know, the distinctions between the two types. Basically, you go above, you go up to seventy-five percent, you don't, you do involve the school board. The minute you go over that, then you, you have to, you know, they have to meet and give you permission and everything.
So I just didn't know if, if seventy-five, if it's seventy-five and below, or seventy-five and above, with where the kicks in for the schools.
Or is it up to and including?
Or is it up to?
Up to.
So, but this is something we want to clarify.
Like I said, you can give up to seventy-five percent, but the minute, like, if you jumped it to seventy-six percent, then they're, then they're in. They've got to, you know, they got to meet and give you permission to do it.
Just to clarify, are you recommending, it's, it sounds like we're recommending to rewrite?
A little more latitude, I think, is what we're recommending in here, you know?
So do we decide on that wording right now, or do we say...
Can we just amend that right now?
It's a second reading, so we're not gonna vote on it.
You, you want to make it up, you want to make it up to fifty percent, is that what you want to make it?
No, no, we want to make it up to seventy-five percent.
Okay. Yeah, I can't, Rod and I did talk about that, because seventy-five percent is allowable under the law. I just can't remember why we said, uh, we said it at fifty percent. So if you want to say up to seventy-five percent, you're certainly within the parameters of the code.
Right, doesn't mean it has to be seventy-five, thirty if you wanted it.
Yeah, it could be twenty-five.
But I take this to read it's hard fifty percent, and the length of it is negotiable, so...
Right, so...
That's what needs to change.
So the, um, um, motion to amend the lang, can we, can we do that right now? Motion to amend the language to read up to seventy-five percent.
That's fine.
Yeah, can we do that? Okay, so that's your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Yes, we amend Section 4 of the resolution to change fifty percent to seven, up to seventy-five percent, right? You got a second on this, or what do you want to do?
Second, yeah, that makes sense.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite?
Aye.
Dr. Lewis?